Calling to order, the municipality of Monroeville, Citizens Night and Agenda Setting Meeting for Tuesday, March 4th. It is approximately 7:05 PM. If you'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
(inaudible)
Have a roll call, please.
Mayor Griesock.
Here.
Mr. Hizzy.
Here.
Mr. Poach.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Crutt.
Here.
Mr. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Biondo.
Here.
Mr. Graziani.
Here.
Mr. Ratcher.
Here.
Ms. Rock.
Here.
Mr. Hugus.
Here.
Mr. Sodak.
Here.
Mr. Weldon.
Here.
Mrs. Lang.
Here.
Welcome. I'm going to open the floor for Citizens Night, for any citizen or taxpayer who would like to address council on any municipal item. Seeing no one, I'm going to close the Citizens Night. There will be another public comment period at next week's regular council meeting at the start for anything on the agenda, and then at the end of next week's meeting for any municipal item. I have an executive session announcement that council conducted an executive session tonight, Tuesday, March 4th, from 6:00 PM to approximately 7:00 PM for matters pertaining to legal personnel and/or real estate. Council legislative action, if any, shall be taken at next Tuesday's March 11th council Council moving down to number five, because the other items are pertaining to next Tuesday's meeting. We're going to be swearing in a couple new officers. We have a presentation by the municipal authorities Tuesday. But what we'll be considering for next Tuesday for our vote will be the minutes. The minutes of the Citizens Night meeting of January 7th, 25; the council work session of January 7th, 25; the regular council meeting of January 14th, 25; the Citizens Night meeting of February 4th, 25; the council work session meeting of February 4th, 25; and the regular council meeting of February 11th, 2025.
Make a motion to approve.
You're a week early. You're a week early, Mr. Stevenson.
They're just reviewing the agenda.
Just reviewing.
I can't get back.
But do you have any questions or comments or additions, corrections? Anybody on council?
Nope.
Hearing none, reports of the tax collections. Any questions or comments about them this evening?
Nope.
To transfers. Any questions, council?
No.
Hearing none, moving over to our payroll report. Any questions or comments about that this evening? Hearing none, very good. We'll consider that at next Tuesday's regular council meeting. We have a one bid and proposal to be considered. That is Monroeville Boulevard, Municipal Driveway, and Northern Pike, State Route 2081, Signal Project Number 25-01-TS. And Mr. Graziani, you want to give some explanation?
Yeah, I mean, it's right here, so we'll all be dealing with it. It's a signal out in front. Bids were appropriately advertised and received, and we had two bidders, and they've been reviewed. You can see the price difference, so the lowest qualified bidder will be selected next week. And looking forward to the project. Mr. Story and Mr. Hugus, putting everything together to get this. We're looking forward to new masts, new signalization as far as the pedestrian cycles and all the equipment getting upgraded, and pretty excited about it.
Any questions? Moving on. We have a development application to be considered, number nine, Mr. Graziani.
Yeah, the applicant Monroeville Municipal Authorities requesting preliminary and final subdivision approval pursuant to the Monroeville Subdivision Land Development Ordinance Number 2525 to subdivide tax parcel 637-S232 into two lots in the S Conservancy zoning district, Lot A with an area of 8.57 acres and Lot B with 0.96 acres. The property address is 4185, 4189 Old William Penn Highway. And of course, the planning commission has recommended approval of this application.
Any questions, council? Hearing none, moving on. We have resolutions to consider for next week. We have, Mr. Graziani, please.
Yeah, there's several resolutions dealing with the fund that you're able to have and make grants out of, and these are ones you do annually. The Memorial Day Parade for $5,500, and the application is attached. And then the Convention and Visitors Bureau also contributes to one that you will do for the Independence Parade, which is the big, you know, course parade we have here and everything involved in that. That's the next resolution. So those two together, there was a contribution from you all related to the Pittsburgh Polar Plunge. So just keep, remember that. It was very exciting. We can talk about that a little later, but these two will pretty much then deplete the reserves for the grant making that you have budgeted for this year. The next resolution deals with, again, an annual thing that you need to do with the Department of Transportation for the reasons of safety. Anything in the right-of-way, in the nature of the state routes has to be able to be appropriately placed and safe. You have trucks that use these routes, so we have to make this application to do the banners and be the responsible party, that they're the right height, that they come down and go up at the right times and so forth, and you do that each year. The next couple resolutions deal with the vacancies. We've discussed these a little bit previously, and they're before you again to make those appointments related to the library board and the planning commission, as well as the parks advisory board, and then lastly, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, you know, filling a vacancy there. That's it for the resolutions.
Moving to reports of municipal staff. Mr. Ratcher, anything this evening?
Nothing there, thank you.
Mr. Graziani.
Yeah, beside that, which is in your packet, I really ask you to take a look at that. MK also has a report as well this month, and you can begin to monitor those. Both of us would encourage you to reach out to us if you're concerned about productivity and outcomes. Our offices are open, and we will answer any questions you have. But meanwhile, I want to talk about the Public Works project. When we left off in the fall, before the budget was finalized, which included a tax increase for the first time in over 10 years of the real estate taxes, there was a discussion about the Public Works project. Go back about 2018 and 19, this municipality chose to create a utility fee for the management of rainwater in the storm system. You enacted the fee in 2019, 2020, and with that, you purchased a large amount of equipment, and you resourced the staff with manpower and so forth. A part of that budget was each year, about $200,000 would be set aside for the building of a new building, the house, set equipment. All the equipment purchases have been made. And about the year 2019, you began to engage architects, and that report was in your packet last month. There's a detailed report put together by Mr. Hugus that showed about $350,000 has been spent since 2019 on geotechnical studies, architectural renderings, architectural analyses of rehabbing existing buildings, building new in its current location on Star Drive, looking at other sites, at potentially new facility being built down on Tilbrook here in Monroeville Park East, the community park east, you know, building a new facility there. We have done asbestos studies and environmental, because that's a concern, and of course, the geotech also involves soil sampling and a bit of environmental analysis related to that. That's at the existing facility. We've looked at some out-of-the-box ideas, which including expanding at Star Drive into the local industrial park, which is obviously in zone for industrial, so it's compatible use, and could we expand that way? So there's a number of things that have been looked at, not just the previous year, which Paul and I did a number of things, directing Gateway to update the studies, update the cost analysis, and do some more due diligence, sort of a doesn't make sense analysis. So we're ready to do that. But when I wanted, when I wanted this year would be a real robust discussion about the Public Works facility, it occurred to me that many of you were uncomfortable with having that discussion without seeing the comprehensive capital improvements program in a draft form. MK has done an amazing amount of work on that, and next week we'll present you just a draft. A draft is that, just a comment, just to get the wheels going. And we're up over $100 million on that alone. This community has not adopted a capital improvements program since, I think, about 2014 or so, I think was the last time one was formally adopted. The Home World Charter requires it to be done annually, and we saw what happened last year with HVAC systems and roof systems. We had a leak in the senior center last year, which ruined the soundboard. We had a leak in the library that resulted in us having to put tarps over the stacks. We have equipment that has been not replaced. So we spent a lot of money last year. Many of that was catching up with past projects that were not able to be advanced. There wasn't, staff wasn't putting them on plans, but the plans never got adopted. So we really lacked the discipline that comes with having a capital improvements program. 2014 was the last time we adopted a capital improvements program. For the last 10 years, we've spent a lot of money on capital improvements. So what we're looking at doing is presenting you to the entire package, and particularly Paul Hugus, he is so organized and so focused in how he presents his information, but there's a lot to it. We have hundreds of miles of roads and thousands of feet of pipe. We have hundreds of acres to maintain and just a lot of equipment, from swing sets and slides to buildings to rifle range, auditoriums, and on and on it goes, public safety training centers and parks and all that stuff. So we're going to be presenting to you draft budget. We're hoping that the capital improvement budget maybe can be adopted as early as August of 2025. Within that, we have to have a discussion about, is that the information, and do you need more to frame that large discussion about the capital budget needed for the facilities? The building, the main building was built in 1975. Mr. Hugus has done a number of presentations to you in different forms. He has offered his time and has walked many of you through the existing facility to show operational challenges and structural deficiencies with that building. We've had presentations at bond council, and many of you guys remember that to finance 50, it cost you about 40. None of you were able to buy a home with cash. You had to ask the bank to lend you money, and the cost for lending is interest, and that's the cost. And so for that, you would have, you know, 40 million of interest to get 50 million over about a 20-year period. Some of you said, hey, wait a second, we have a lot of reserves. Let's reduce those reserves by investing that in the capital building, and that will limit our exposure to have to take out as much loan. Well, that's a thought. Some of you have said, maybe we don't need to do the whole 50 million, because we don't maybe need to make improvements to this building, or the library, or the senior center, or into the recreation system, and that's a thought worth having. It's a discussion. But the challenges are until you kind of see all of the things together, fair enough, it's hard to know which way is the way to go. For example, we have, since 2024, when I started, and have spent money at a kind of alarming rate. We have bought a lot of equipment that was not, you know, was neglected. We had to buy, we had to authorize, authorize a purchase last week. I have a forklift that was used when we got it and still like 30 years old since we've had it. It can't be, the mechanics can't get another hour out of it, so we're buying another one. We authorized the purchase of that, it's about a $35,000 purchase. I mentioned the roofs and the HVAC systems on the library and the senior center. Mr. Strom had for years, said, it's coming. Mr. Float, it's coming, but we just never programmed it. The problem, when you wait till it breaks, you all know. It's like when you and your wife decide to go out to dinner on a spur of the moment, only to get home and find out you had coupons for that place. And it's frustrating, because you could have saved money, but if you sort of did it at the spur of the moment, you end up costing you more, right? It's the same with us. When we wait till things break, the opportunity cost of saving money by getting better deals or potentially grants is lost. That's the failure to stick to programs and plans. So our, the ball's in my court, and I don't know if we're 70% done of the draft, but close to it. Close enough that I don't have a problem with getting something in front of you soon. And I will give credit where credit's due. It's Mr. Hugus, it's Josie, it's Mr. Strom, it's Tara, it's Nicole, it's Paul, and I can go on and on about the staff and MK putting the time in to get that budget. Some of you guys wonder what I do. Some might say I just do TV interviews. I do more than that, and you'll see what that more looks like. But you're going to have to make the decisions about what you want to do. You can't do the same. The community that you're in now was given to you by people who took out loans, including bonds, to give you the buildings you have. The question will be yours, will you be giving that to the future? Or will you be, when you're done with your terms, letting them decide what to do with their equipment and facilities? So this is going to be the year where we're making a lot of big decisions, and you'll be voting on a capital budget, and that may include going into debt for the next 20 years, and it may include building a whole new Public Works facility in a new location. A lot to be determined. I know you wouldn't want to have this conversation. You asked me every meeting to talk about it. Are there questions that you'd like me to address?
Can I ask one real quick? So when we're talking about capital improvement, we're talking about the Public Works building and the capital improvement together now?
Yeah.
Because previously, I think we had talked about them each separately.
So we're trying to frame them together, and here's why.
Okay.
Questions on council to understand the way the money works, and that's good stewardship. Capital projects include, or capital purchases include, those things that are durable, non-recurring, and are over a certain dollar threshold. So they could include anything from IT equipment to office equipment, furniture, to buildings, improvements, but mainly in this community, it's the paving program, which makes a lot of sense, because if you were to add the total value of the asset of the paving program and were to replace it, like to build it, like its value, if you had to buy the right-of-ways and build new reds, you're talking, you know, 10 million a mile. So times that by the 100 miles you have, and the pipe that goes along with that. But vehicles, you know, equipment, you all know with your personal vehicles, they're not cheaper than they were 10 years ago, and they have a lot of bells and whistles on them that seem to be mechanics in a house to manage. So to your question, I felt that there was enough confusion of council that until you saw all of the moving parts, it wouldn't be easy to be having the decision. In other words, we needed to give you more information, more reconnaissance, more data, so that you could make, to inform your discretion to make a better decision. So yes, it will, and we're over $100 million, and I think when we added the building, it was like 140 or so. Is that where we're at?
110.
110. 110 million. Get your mind around that. Now, obviously, you'll say, well, okay, it's a wish list. Let's talk about what we need to do, because the difference we needs and wants, we all certainly live with every day, whether we have children or whether it's just what we want for dinner. So we'll put it out there, and we'll have a great discussion between, let's say, April and August about what we can, and what are the needs, and what are the priorities? And all I can say is, you look at the last 10 years of spending, and the road paving is a great example. We got so behind on the road paving, because we saved a dollar to spend 10. And you hear it when people don't like your tar and chip, you know, you hear it when they don't like the fog seal. And why are we doing that? Because we're trying to take care of neglected and like forgone investments in infrastructure. But people love paved roads. They liked snowplowed streets. They want services. Why is Pittsburgh not delivering services? Because they have eight to 10 trucks that are offline. Why are those that way? Because some people decided it wasn't a good idea to keep up with their replacement schedule of vehicles. They thought that was more of a want than a need. But eventually, that came to, and it's meat and potatoes, guys. When you guys see what these numbers are, they're trucks, they're equipment, they're buildings, like this building. And then you'll get to decide what's the fluff and what's the, you know, what's not to be prioritized. And Paul, you put a lot of time into it, and others have. What are the other questions you have? Because this, there's no reason why we can't be here till 11 o'clock discussing it. It's that important.
If I may, we have kicked this can down the road for four years on the Public Works building. We have spent $350,000 on drawings, core samples, engineering. It's time we got off our ass and did something. Now, I have a proposal, and nobody will probably like it, but we could take today $5 million out of MS4, start moving dirt. We could actually start this process, and it won't cost us a cent of interest, not a cent.
You've been saving that money by not building the MS4 building. That was the way the budget was contracted.
That's right.
Roughly.
And it's already there, and it doesn't cost us anything to use it. So I just wanted to throw that out there and let everybody know that we could start if we so choose.
And where would that be?
Well, engineering has told us they believe it should be East. East is a two-year project from the time you start it to the time you finish it without interrupting any services. If you do rehab of the existing facility, it's a four-year project, and you're going to interrupt services because you've got 70 employees working there. So I agree with, I think East is where we need to go. That's what I got.
Well, if that $50 million loan or bond you want to take out, you're saying a 20-year payment?
Yeah, for 20 years.
That's $3.6 million a year.
So the way, if Josie can kind of correct me, it's a little fuzzy on the memory, but we would do it in three segments. So first year, we'd do like a 14 million, next year, maybe another 14 million, and the last year to get to 50. So you don't issue it all at once, but about 2028, let's say, there would be, I think it was like 2.7 million was the annual payment. It's been a while since we've looked at the number.
That would stretch it out to 40 years, or at least 35.
I don't think it was 3.6. He was quoting the number 3.6.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Those are the things that will be touched upon within that. Now, my, I'm trying to put stuff out there. Whether it's what I think you ought to do.
What I'm saying is that the payment is going to add 3.6 million, or somewhere around 3 million per year.
Let's call it three. Yeah, so, correct. You're right now spending 1.2 million on debt service?
A little higher than that.
Okay, let's say 1.4, but that will be done next year.
Yeah.
Now, I'm not saying this is how you look at it, but many of us, when we're done with the car payment, we go into the next car payment. So I'm not saying that's the way it works, but you have capacity, your bond rating is insanely good.
Yep.
You have little to no debt. To carry that much, think about your mortgage, think about your weekly income. If we have a $40 million general fund, it's not unreasonable to have 2.5 to 3 million dollars of that to be going to debt service. That is not a poor debt position. I know government debt, and we all agree that the 36 trillion of the federal government is absolutely galactically insane, but we're not that. We don't print money. We're talking about a debt ratio that's near our annual average. Make it simple. Imagine an income of $100,000. You wouldn't be crazy for someone at an income of $100,000 to have a $250,000 mortgage. I'm talking about a 50 million. And I'm not saying this is what we do, but I'm just trying to frame it for you. If we have a $40 million annual budget, a $50 million, no, that's not unreasonable. That, that, that was.
What I'm trying to frame is, how are you going to pay for it? Are we going to raise taxes again? Are we going to lay?
That's the $1,000 question.
I don't want to see either one.
A plan includes two sides, revenue and expenditures. Your decision will be to decide your tolerance level of what you feel the, and the revenue.
We have enough revenues coming in and.
Well, that's what you're going to see, Mike, and that's why I felt this was the only way to get to the discussion of what he wants to have, which is to start moving dirt and get it done, right? Which is a good, good point. Your point is, I'm uncomfortable with that until I see, how the hell are we going to pay for this?
Right.
Well, Alex, let me.
And that's what I'm trying to do in a plan. The plan will have both sides. It will have a revenue projection side, including what debt services we may be suggesting, as well as an expenditure side, which includes fleet and road pavement schedules and maintenance and so forth.
And Alex, the way we're looking at it at this point, you didn't emphasize what the bond consultants had whenever we were here. I had a chance to listen to him, and MK probably did. Oh, you weren't here yet, MK with that too. But Mike, unlike we're looking at that entire number at one point, a staged approach to it against our ability to pay, it offended me. And I kind of thought I knew what, understood this was going, but I think it's a better way to look at it. Would it necessarily be 3.6, 3.5, 3, or 2.9, depending upon also the way we do it? And, and, this is what the bond consultants had said, and to Bob's point, in a way, okay, what are we putting in to start it? It's just anything else, what's the bigger down payment? So I don't, I don't want to oversimplify it, and I mean, Alex, you're trying to, I get it, the $100,000 versus $200,000 mortgage. It's a little better than that in terms of this process, too. So I think it's worthwhile listening to, but at the end of the day, it is, what are we going to decide to pay in debt service in that number, you know, to do it? If we're going to do all of this, we're not going to do $100 million worth of stuff. This council's not going, you know, that's, I think we need to, we may start off with the wrong foot for that, but that's, here's 100, we're not doing that, but what do we need to decide if we're going to do it?
Six months?
Yeah, two. So, I mean, I think that's.
Well, again, just to frame it, just to be clear, that number of 110 is a, here's your, here's your capital building needs. That's a, that's the physical buildings. That's your house, your shed, your garage, siding, roof, windows, and all that. And then there's the other capital purchases. For example, in your home, a television isn't something you do very often, and it's enough that you have to talk to your wife to do it, whatever. That's what we're talking about. Those are the six vehicles, the four dump trucks, you know, the whatever machine.
Fire apparatus.
No, the fire apparatus, we haven't even touched. Those things have, I don't know if doubled is the right thing to say, it might be a little exaggerating.
No.
Hasn't it to do that?
No, it's not.
But they are costing more, and we have a five-year agreement.
It is.
That's expiring this year, and, you know, the firemen have basically put on the table six or seven million dollars worth of new purchases they'd like us to make in the next five. That's just one component. There's other components and other moving parts, right?
If we would borrow $50 million, it would wipe out the $3 million tax increase we just passed.
So to the point of the tax increase, when we talked about it originally, when I first introduced the concept in September, we were talking about a 2 mil, and I was trying to tie it to a financing, which we didn't do, and we'd not agreed to do, because we're trying to figure out what our tolerance is. We reduced it to 1.5 mil, but to your point, Bob, that goes back to Mike's point. I've said this before, I said it when I was interviewed for this job. My family, for the last whatever number of years, had seven people in a house for a number of years. They don't anymore. We had one and a half bathrooms, right? You just make it work. Somebody could say, you need a bigger house, you need another bedroom. And we could say, sure, feels like that sometimes, but we didn't. You know why? Just like you won't, because you couldn't afford it. So there's going to be a discussion that will be the reality check, which will be, what can we afford? And that may be sobering to some of us who want to do different things. And I'm not afraid of that conversation, but it does begin with what you can afford and what you need.
So this $50 million number is for what, Public Works Building?
Okay, to be very clear, it was an estimate of a $44 million Public Works facility at East, built out, you know, appropriately. Yes. Not bigger than it needed to be. I mean, we did not build, sometimes when I look at them, I'm kind of frustrated, because I feel, I feel like it was really trying to be almost too frugal in its vision, but that's one. The fix was, you have three main buildings in 22 parks. You have this building, which is now 25 years old, and the library and senior center that parts of them are 30, 40 years old. They need updated. That library right now has no 88 bathroom on the top floor. That's just astounding, they have a closet bathroom on the top floor, like a one-person kind of thing. That's just something we should be able to adjust. So the 6 million was looking at the rest of the physical buildings and trying to get that. Now, some would say that's going to cost way more than that, and I would agree. What you do, though, is you leverage grants. When you have match money, you can go to the state and to the feds at times and say, I'm willing to pony up 20, 30, 40, 50% if you'll come in with the other. And we don't do that well. Why? Because we don't have our act together. We wait till it breaks, and then we find out, like I said, with your house and your spouse situation, you just did it. You forgot the coupon was at home. So what we're going to do is what I envision, and I'm not saying we're going to do this, but if we did a 50 million, and we took out 6 million for those other buildings, we may be actually doing 10 million or more of improvements in those, and I don't know what grants could be had for the Public Works. but we don't know until we get a direction of kind of what you guys want us to do, because I'm not going to apply for grant for building I'm not going to build, right? And I'm not going to go after whatever without knowing what my match is.
And we might not want to approve it if we don't know what kind of grant money's available.
Correct. So, that's going to be the challenge. When you get a picture of the revenue side, it will include a discussion of transfers from the general fund and maybe some decisions that were something like this. A decision to create the cable franchise fee, the, the impact fee from the landfill, just the capital. Take your five-eleven taxes, your earned income, your real estate, your business taxes, your local service taxes, and all of those, and just let that run the general fund. It gets back to some of your points before about staffing and your challenge, your concerns about that. But we have liquid fuels we get every year. You know, that can go into maybe funding the paving program. Right now, we use it for salt and street lighting, you know, but those are decisions we can make either way. But we're going to look at all of our sources of revenue, and we're going to try to figure out what the tolerance level is, and that's the affording side. And including that, we'll, we'll be thinking about potential grants, you know, not if come grants, but ones that kind of exist today and what we would expect to do. But we all know how this world works, right? It is an overrunning thing, you know, until you cut ribbons and get into the space, you really don't know what you're getting into. So, you pass in faith a budget, hoping that this is what's going to happen, but what do you get? Cost overruns? You get contingencies that you didn't account for, and things go wrong. So, you try to even budget for that, and Paul's pretty good at figuring out some of those numbers. But you don't know the unknowns, and I can't guarantee you that I'll get seventy percent on the grant, or twenty, you know, sixty-five. It might be better, it might be worse, depends on how it goes. But this is going to be a tough part, but it's in my court. What I owe you is, is a plan to begin to ask questions and kick the tires, lift the hood up, and see what you're liking about it. And you have, you have the power, right? Because you can vote to, to say, this is all we can afford. And that may not include going into debt. That may not include committing money to, to do these buildings. But there will come a time where we got to do something. You did a new utility in twenty nineteen, and within that utility, you told the ratepayers that there would be funds going to building a building to house the equipment that the utility needed. That obligation is out there, and that's where you're starting to get that number. Whether it's exactly that or not, it just comes to, you know, what we can afford.
Yeah.
But that's, that's kind of how this all got started. In twenty nineteen, to his point, you've spent over three hundred thousand dollars to think this through. Are you ready to vote tonight? No. Why not? Because you want more information. And your more information, I think, at this point, is a capital draft, capital budget that gives you all of it in one place that you can look at. And say, you know what, Mr. Graziani, Mr. Manager, you're out, you're out of line. That's a want. There's no way we're doing that, and this is what we think we need. And then we have to be big people and live with those decisions. Mr. Hugis or staff, I mean, am I missing something? Because this is an important discussion, and I don't want to just ending it when there's stuff to be said. You've been at it since twenty nineteen.
A lot of moving parts.
And how many times have you gotten quotes in this exercise?
For which, which?
Well, carpet, for example. This carpet is original. Look at it. You just don't keep going at it and saying, it's fine. We've broken tile in this building. This building's only twenty-five years old. Stuff wears out, just like at your home. Sometimes you replace, some of you have been in your home long enough that you've replaced the second roof. Some of us, it's the third water heater.
It was a hundred thousand dollars for new blinds in this building.
And, and someone says, well, what's with that? Well, that's a thirty, forty-year purchase, whatever, and, and it's over years, but some years it's got to be paid for.
The longer we wait, the more we're going to spend. Things going to go up. So, the longer we wait, we're costing taxpayers more money.
And that's what we've done over, with a lot of things, whether, all the things we're talking about, the different buildings. Small items is good, that's a good example. Blinds, like all these little things that we kind of neglect, and then we try to do later. Our, our parks and our playgrounds, you know, all of them, they've been neglected for the past, since two thousand nine. In the past twenty years, the, the parks and the playgrounds have really been neglected. So, there's like, and all these like little things, the libraries.
I mentioned the bathroom, the library, the senior center has these dividers.
Dividers are about to fall down.
They're cute, but they really don't work. And to get new dividers, it's going to cost you money. Well, that's not a general fund annual purchase. That's got to be put aside as a capital purchase, and that's a smaller one in the capital purchase world, but to the senior center, it's huge. It's like, makes the rooms work.
And safe.
Yeah, they might fall down while we're talking.
Well, we've been taking care of the capital program with the pay as we go. I mean, we didn't take the.
Pay as you go leads to paying more over time.
Well.
I'm not saying going into debt.
We didn't take the ten million dollar loan that we had in front of us in twenty-two.
Look, capital budget isn't about necessarily going to debt. It's about programming expenses before things die and before you have to.
So, you're saying we don't have the money to put the dividers up right now?
I'm saying since, I'll say this, and Josie and, and Mr. Hugis and Mr. Cole is not here, Chief Cole can attest. When they've come to me with capital requests, I've been, been saying yes. And without a plan, I've been spending less, because I've looked at the fund balance you have, but that's a bad.
We did have a plan. It was me tonight. We had a plan.
There was one drafted in twenty twenty-two.
Correct.
I think it was the spring.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three was there.
Is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah. The last one we had, which we never, we never funded it.
Correct.
And I believe that petition wall was in that.
Mr. Scham probably has gotten his second or third quote on it. I mentioned carpet. There's been things that he has asked vendors to come and give us another number. And, and to your point, the numbers haven't gone the other way.
Correct.
Yeah, they're not going to.
Some of the staff is pretty frustrated, because they're, they're, they've been asked several times by Tim and myself to give us budget numbers. And then they're like, well, are you going to approve the plan if we give you the number?
Sometimes yes, sometimes no.
Well, one side gets everything they want.
Right. Oh, absolutely.
Because you mentioned this MS four. If you remember the way the MS four was packaged, to determine a household rate, you had to do a five-year, ten-year capital projection needs and a, and a maintenance cost, the O and M side of the pipes, cleaning catch basins before storms. You know, that, that was a cost. It was dedicated staff, street sweeping, whatever it was you were doing within your O and M. But then there was a capital need, and you identified flood control projects. Beachwood was an example of one we've done, where you said, we're going to be able to match grant money and take advantage of those by having this utility fee. But part of that was buying a lot of equipment and, and building a facility for it. And that's how I think was a main initiator to get this started, besides the fact that municipal building was at that time about fifteen years old.
I think one of the issues, and I don't want to speak for Chief Cole, but me, fire department, it's need to do a knee-jerk reaction when you have to buy vehicles. Well, the problem is, you got a two-year lead time to buy the vehicles. Fire department's a three-year lead time. By the time you look at and go, look, this thing, it's, it's at the end of its life. Now, you got two years before the, the new vehicle comes in. So, if it's programmed, you know when to spec it, when to order, until you get it in two years.
Well, the great example of that is while you all drive your personal vehicle, some of you told it goes into the ground. You can afford to do that, because you don't have to make arrests or put out fires. No vehicle in this community should not be able to answer the bell at any given time, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. That's why we invest in mechanics the way we do, and so we don't wait till it dies. We don't, if that's the year, if you figure twenty twenty-seven's got to get it, let's expect that twenty thirty is the national standard that's going to die. I'm okay with that, because I want to be able to answer the bell when it rings. It's different than your household. This, some people say, well, businesses can choose certain things that government can't. And when the fire, or when the call, when you have to go zero to sixty to pursue someone, that's not the time to worry about your timing bell.
Well, Alex, this is.
You know, some of us would care less.
Yeah.
Because I got AAA, and they'll just pick me up alongside the road, but I don't have to do anything, but other than to get home with my car. We have to, the staff has to, keep the community safe. That's not something you dial back and hope it gets delivered before the thing dies.
And to Alex's point, to Paul, to your point, Joe and I had started also, and with the fire department is going to, to be doing that. Hopefully, before we get started with the capital project, I'll have something in front of our group to be able to look at exactly that problem, because actually, the problem's even worse. Just recently, had an estimate for replacement of vehicle, we're five years now. How do we fund that? What do we need? What's our needs for it? And are we excess? Can we come back? Can we function with those services? And as you know, again, you know, full disclosure, you know, Paul, certainly as a fire service, and as a former chief, to understand that. Again, to borrow your quote, there's a lot of moving parts. So, how do we accomplish the task that we need? So, I'm going to be asking this group, as part of this, to help develop, to say, let's take a look at the one thing that we have, and that's the data. One thing we own is the data, the response information, and the situation's getting worse, not better, busier, not slower. I mean, we absolutely, I can tell you that now, and we're going to get some help to do that. We've already initiated some stuff with the DECD. You spoke with some, Alex spoke with some people this past week in Hershey's conference, and some of the folks to do that, to take a look at specifically vehicles, response, what we're doing, where we're going, what we're doing. Mike's asked me several times, Bob, hey, fellas, how come we're engaged in this activity in, in public safety and fire and the mess side of it? Yeah, you have a good point. You made a good point. So, I have to come up with those answers. So, I've been trying to do that. And Joe's been beaten up on the, the equipment people to do that, to add to that, to this, this decision-making. So, we want to try to fold that in, because to Alex's point, it's a very complicated, it's more complicated than anything we've ever done in our careers now. It's absolutely unbelievable to do that. So, we have to look hard at what the services are. And to Alex's point, you know, it's, do we do it the same way? Do we always provide it the same, the same piece? Are we meeting the need? And unfortunately, that's one of those things, like plowing the roads, like picking up the garbage, that are mandated for us to be able to do, police, fire, and emergency medical services. Are all mandated for us to do.
But, but to be, I don't want to pick on you too much.
Go ahead. Yeah, it's okay.
Discussions of.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do we do communications when other communities have decided to have the county? Do we pick up garbage when other communities have outsourced that? You know, these are the discussions of needs and wants as well, because operations, I think we love our services, and everybody will say, those services are so highly regarded, why would we ever think of that? Well, if you don't have the equipment, or you can't afford the equipment to properly do the service, it's going to be a challenge.
Right.
And you guys have been here long enough to hear these things. This isn't anything new to you. But we're going to have to, in these crazy talks of numbers and lead times and how much things cost, have also other discussions about priorities. That's, when I started here, it's about mission, vision, values. I asked you to complete surveys. I want to tell you what's, what's most important. And let's stick to that and do that well, and then what's there and so forth, and do those things well as well. But that's going to sometimes mean you got to give money to fix a building that's thirty years old. That's going to mean you have to buy dividers and do bathrooms and, and buy garbage trucks. When did, when did the, the garbage trucks we signed last year, when are we getting those?
August.
Yeah. So, I mean.
Two hundred eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That's quick.
And.
Year and a half only.
It was relatively quick.
I know, relatively.
But that's an essential service we provide, but there may be a future council that says, you know what, scrap that, or whatever. I'm not saying that's a good idea, but I'm just saying that's part of this whole what you can afford thing. We may think we need, but it may be a want. And those are historic questions we'll have to ask ourselves. What was once a need may no longer be afforded or affordable. So, it's fallen into like, we got to do it differently. Okay, that's when you said the complicated about moving parts. There's, there's a lot. Other communities don't provide those services. We don't get any other revenues for the nine-one-one center. That's all out of our pocket. But you all pay to have nine-one-one at the county as well. Nothing new. I mean, we found the report, Joe did, that was in a file that Marshall did in two thousand and five, a presentation to council. Advantages of keeping communication in-house, because you remember at that time, decoupling from the regional. When we were upstairs, we were decoupling from the regional, and Marshall did a study, and you guys, you weren't on the council then, but they voted, let's keep it. It's worth it, and it's proven itself to be valuable, and it's a very well-appreciated service. As we talk about what we can afford and what we can't afford, everything should be on the table. Managers.
No, we need one.
What, what questions do you think you need in the plan? I mean, what, I mean, we talked about revenue, Mike, there'll be lots about revenue. What, what do you guys want to see as you think about this discussion?
On funding options, what does it mean? What's the impact of the different, the different, ten now, ten, twenty, ten, twenty, ten over a period of time? And the impact on the potential? We talked about it with the tax increase, you know, earlier. It's like, okay, this was way more, none of us really wanted to do that. And then we dialed it back to one, one point five. Hopefully, we never have to do that again. As I said, at that time, for me, what really clinched, clinched the argument was, we were really, our revenue was kind of stable in the numbers, but the inflation was killing us. You know, we put much money into that piece of it. Okay. So, at some point, we'll have to raise taxes again at some point. Is that four years, five years? Is that eight years? Is that a quarter, you know, less, not one point five, just because of inflation alone? What does that mean to the, to the security? So, I'd like to know what those strategies are with some of the, the bond folks to be able to say, you know, guys, there's some ways you can go about it, so that we're not really, from the get-go, paying on the, on the, on a fifty million dollar bond, you know, the revenue of bond debt service of three point five, three point seven million, which will then, you know, well, bonds don't fluctuate like that, and like you're, you know, for so, for that long a period of time.
We're all cognizant of what our municipality likes. They, they like snow removal. They like garbage collection. They like dispatch. I don't think they understand it, but we do, and, and we think it's important. But nobody wants to lose or have any of those services disrupted. If we choose, and we haven't chosen East, and we haven't chosen the municipal, the building that we have now, but if we choose the building we have now, we're going to disrupt service. We've got seventy people there. If there's people there working, something's got to happen. It's, it's just not going to work. It, it's not feasible. So, again, I'm, I'm on that same horse that I'm riding down the road, that we need to do something relatively soon about that structure.
It seems to me that. Looking at public works. Paul, you made a great presentation. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
And, and what I'm saying is, we got to quit adding other stuff to it, to, to raise the price, and concentrate on the public works building standalone, and, and get that done, and then worry about something else.
You know, don't we want to see everything at once and just see, and, and then we can, you can cut. You can cut at that point, though.
Not for a hundred million dollars.
Yeah, not for a hundred million, but that's why you're going to cut certain things that you don't want in there.
I think that comes down to seven.
The whole issue, the whole principle of a capital improvement budget is for municipal-wide infrastructure, buildings, and everything. So, I honestly agree with just signaling that, just one, one item or one property.
Well, there are dominos too. I mean, they do, they impact each other. One, one impacts the other impacts. It, it would be nice to be able to think that it was standalone, but obviously, it kind of isn't, you know? They're, they're all, they're all too integrated with what we're going to do.
And it's a four-year plan too. It's not like it's an annual, it's not an annual capital budget. It's, it's for a period of time.
I think we can look at other, other financing options to make it more palatable in a plan that's a little.
The question we'll try to give you, if it's one you're interested in having answered, is what about those other buildings? You know, what, what are their capital needs? And, and how do we safely, you know, service the public with those buildings? And I mentioned a small item, like the divider, you know, and I mentioned a small item relatively, like a whole story that doesn't have a decent bathroom, you know, as far as handicap accessibility goes. You know, if, we're going to give that to you. You guys are going to have to say, well, we don't want to include that in the, you know, because that may be part of it. So, I mean, all I'm trying to do, Bob, is just inform your discretion. I'm not telling you have to, but it would be unwise and prudent of me not to share with you. Here's what those needs are. You've got people like Mr. Float, John Float, and Mr. Scham and others, Mr. Corey, who works in these buildings. They, they're seeing this stuff, and they tell Paul, hey, you know, we got to be thinking about that. We're going to get a little more out of that, but it's going to break. So, Paul, go get, go get an estimate, and Paul puts it in his spreadsheet. I'll give it to the manager, and that's what we're trying to do, and I'm giving it to you. So, I, I will show you all those, whether you guys choose to make improvements at the library, or whatever, the parks, or whatever, we'll have to decide. And back to what he's saying, it's, it's going to be about a number of things with the public works. It can be done in phases, or what?
And I concur with Dennis a hundred percent. Getting a look at the draft that you're proposing for us, and then, like he said, then you look at it and you say, okay, here's four million, we're not going to spend that for this. Or here's ten, and we're not going to do that. So, we need to look at that draft. So, thank you for preparing it, and I look forward to seeing it.
Yeah, and between, and all the items too, whether it's, whether we break it up by department or by building, there will, and we talk about needs, those will also be ranked. You know, there are certainly things, okay, these are definite needs that are, whether it's a safety issue, or a, whether it's heat, air conditioning, those type of things. And then there'll be some, like blinds, or things like that might be maybe lower on the scale. But I think ultimately, what we need to do is get the draft in front of us, and, and then we'll have a lot of work ahead of us after that.
We've got a great team. You got a person last year too, the simple thing of fleet management. We're really, I think, with Brad, who is our chief mechanic, doing a good job of trying to get you the data, life expectancy. Back to your point, like, is this a critical item? What's the life expectancy? And we got, I think, a great team that is looking at those even more improved than we've been able to do in the past, just because of the people I see around here. A lot of good staff members. So, we'll get those answers, I think, because I think that's important. Is it safe?
So, we, we talked at length, so, repeat, refresh, repeat one more time. When do you think you'll have that draft in front of us?
I, I can see us next week, giving you a, a print copy and beginning the process, and it is going to be a rough draft. The department heads will be reacting to it in the, for the first time, and then we'll move from there. But we're going to have enough lead time, I think, by August. You know, remember, we can't do site work until we get permits, you know? We have to get planning and commission approval, so that's going to be some time. I mean, it'd be nice to be able to do it simpler, but we still have to do certain things. For example, some of those may be DEP permits, because we're converting some stream, because we're doing enough earth disturbance to require that. So, but I think in August, my goal is each year in August, we're adopting the capital, and then the general fund. I, I think that process. And then the general fund. I, I think that process makes a lot of sense and gives you enough lead time. I think you felt the frustration this past year. Many of you, when you were realizing the tax increase was what was before you, wanted a timeout and a slowdown. Get it? Makes a lot of sense. So, so something you're getting in April, it won't be really, so don't get upset what you isn't everything in a nice bow. It shouldn't be. It's got to be worked and reworked and worked so that in August, you're passing something that you guys filled. Now, that passing may then lead to earthmoving, bond financing, and all those other things. And you have plenty of time between now and then to keep asking questions and maybe rewrite the plan four or five more times before you get it, we get it right. Is that what you wanted?
Any other questions, council?
Yep.
A lot of work ahead. Anything else? Mr. Graziani, for your
I mean, just the normal stuff. There's amazing things going on in this community, like the pull or plunge. We're looking at doing on March 28th, a Monroeville pull or plunge for the first time. One point two million dollars was raised by the pull or plunge down in Pittsburgh. It was a multi-departmental effort, though by and far led by the police. Mr. Hugis, I heard, I didn't see it. Somebody tells me he threw the mayor in the water. I don't know if that was for a second or for a third time, but anyways, we had a lot of fun.
I dumped willingly.
We, we're looking at doing something at Community Park West on March 28th. It could be a very warm day like today, or it could be very cold. You just never know in Western Pennsylvania. But a lot of great things happening. Each department can report on that. But this is a good community that's making good decisions, and I'm very thankful for your all's leadership and willingness to have these, you know, hard conversations. Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Lang, anything this evening?
Just if anyone has questions on my report, please reach out, email, cell phone. I'm really glad to answer any questions for you. And thank you all for having me on board on, on the team. I'm coming up on thirty days, and it's been a wonderful experience. So thank you.
You haven't run screen. So that's good. Very good. Thank you. Mr. Hugis?
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Rock?
Nothing tonight.
Very good.
I guess what Joe would say, so.
Mr. Beyond, we'll start with you. Reports of council members.
Yeah, Jared, do you have the logo contest?
Hmm.
So the, the logo contest was extended for the Fourth of July logo until the March 27th. Thank you, Jared. And if you look at the screen here, you can send them either to liliandominic@gmail.com or drop off submissions at the library. And that's for the Fourth of July logo contest. That's what we'll put on promotional material. The winner will be announced. Last year, they had a video, Jared did a video with the winner. I assume we'll do something similar this year.
Great job last year. Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Well, as you know, last month, I talked about the worst post office in the area, which is our Monroeville post office. Enough said about that. Tuesday, I'll be talking about the worst emergency room in the area. So tune in, listen up, and look for your comments. And I'll wait until Tuesday for the rest of my report. Thank you.
Mr. Adams.
Mr. Crutt.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Stevenson.
I have two items. One, it's Fat Tuesday, so drink responsibly.
Oh, my gosh, I forgot.
And the second item is the, no, not Ash Wednesday. The second one is the Irish one. That's coming.
St. Patrick's. Possibly for that.
Bob, a Williams.
That's all I have.
Bobby a Williams.
Thank you. Mr. Coach, anything this evening? No, I'm good. Next week.
Nothing, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hizzy. I have nothing.
Make the motion.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Second.
Motion.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Post. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you and good night.